Okay, meeting come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is roll call.
Honorable Mayor Lindell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Jeff Morford.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Sashow.
Here.
Councilmember John Caper.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Boyette.
I am here.
Councilmember James Parks.
Here.
All righty, next on the agenda is public comment or audience participation. For items that are not on the agenda, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You need to sign in by the podium. Anybody here to speak tonight?
I'm Lindell, and I'm here tonight to provide you with the absolute best information. You will love it. As I told a couple of you I would follow through, this is regarding to the last meeting, the TNR program. I thought it was a great meeting. A lot of issues came up and things I certainly didn't know about. So I got ahold of a couple of really good animal shelters, and I said, "Point me in the direction of the best possible, up-to-date information on the TNR program and also on PETA," which I didn't know what that was still. So I have a packet for you. I did all the research. It's all organized, and what's inside is the official information on PETA, and I gave you the pros and cons, so you could look and see what the cons are. And it's very concise. You can see both issues, to just be fair about the whole thing to really arm you. And in that is the PETA activity in Colorado. I thought that was interesting, but mainly they're an animal rights group, and they have been in Colorado, and I have listed what they deal with. It's usually bigger animals, so I thought that was interesting. And I also checked with -- oh, they have -- it's an animal advocacy. And then they pointed me to Alley Cat Alley's, and that's a national organization that helps all kinds of cities, big and small, all over the country. And their information was fabulous. So I went through -- there was a lot of things that didn't relate to us, so I pulled out some things. They fully explain the TNR program, and it's very understandable. It's interesting. And then there's another little section on the vacuum that at least when you pull cats out, what happens and why. And then it even has -- they had a whole section to study for officials, like what you guys are all facing and you have to think about. So they have given information for officials, and I thought it was excellent. I copied that and made that for you. And then it even has -- it has all the things, how to think about it when you're -- if you're going to create a program, things to do and things not to do. And then it has even a sample ordinance. You don't need an ordinance for a TNR program, but it gives you all kinds of things, like you could try a pilot place just to try out. And I think the success of the program would be education, and a lot of the people that were here know how, but especially for you, I think, the information to think about. And I think that the ordinance will be coming up in December, as I understand. So I wanted to give this to you so you'd have plenty of time to look through it and add to the information that you already have.
All righty. Thank you, Len.
Yeah, I can help counsel.
Thank you. I wanted the blue one.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Len.
All right, anybody else?
For those who don't know who I am, I'm Pete Wagner. I'm the news director for Mediologic Radio and KFTM here in Fort Morgan. A lot of people may or may not know this, but if you've listened to KFTM for 25 minutes or 25 years, you probably know who John Waters is. He's the host of the big morning show and a pinnacle part of not only KFTM but of Mediologic Radio. He just recently went through a liver transplant surgery, happened this past weekend, and the good news is he came through it just fine, and he's doing okay, so good that he didn't even have to go to ICU after it was done. So that's very good. That's the latest that we have. One thing that we are doing, though, is we are having a fundraising event for John this Saturday, Saturday, November 22nd. It'll be at 5:30 PM. It'll be at the Mark Ehrn Event Center at the Morgan County Fairgrounds in Brush. It's going to be a dinner, a pre-Thanksgiving meal, be prepped by Donnie Edson, and the dinner will be at 5:30 PM with a live auction at 7:00 PM. Tickets for the event are available at the KFTM studios west of Fort Morgan. You can also contact Donnie Edson or Matt Wolfe if you want to get tickets. The price for the tickets are $50 for adults, $20 for kids 12 and under. If you can't make it to the event, or if you can't necessarily do the full amount for the tickets, you just want to do a donation, we accept donations too. But this is all just to help out John Waters, and hopefully he gets back to the station soon, so I don't have to do the whole morning show myself. So anyway, thank you very much.
All right, anybody else? Okay, next on the agenda is presentation of possible action on First Amendment to North Colorado Health Department Development Agreement. Mr. Nation.
Okay, I'll start things off, and then I'll let Trish say anything that she wants to. We've got a couple of development agreements, as I've let you know, that are coming up on their termination clause or dates and everything. This is a project that the city has continued to want to support. Several years ago, we made available a piece of ground that the city owned right next to the Banner Clinic on Railroad Avenue, and so we've been working with the Health Department on this. And so before their development agreement expired, we reached out to them and said, "Are we still wanting to move forward with facility there and everything?" And so they indicated that they did. And so what you have in your packet tonight is an extension of that development agreement, and I will let Trish say anything that she wants to.
So I'm Trish McLean. I'm the director for the Northeast Colorado Health Department, and as Brent alluded to, yes, we would like to continue our quest towards a new building. We had applied, just so that you kind of have a little bit of background here, we had applied for CDS funding, the congressionally-directed spending, in 2024. We had actually utilized some leftover ARPA funding at the beginning of 2024, so at the beginning of last year, to do a lot of the legwork to get to the point where we could apply for funding. So we were able to secure an owner's rep. We got an architect. We did the conceptual drawings, soils testing, the ALTA survey, and then we also got an opinion of cost. So currently, the estimated cost for the new building is $6.4 million, which is about $500 per square foot, so it is expensive. When we applied for the CDS funding last year, we were not -- we didn't -- we made it through the first round, but we didn't make it through the second round. But it really was kind of a blessing in disguise, because through that process, we discovered that our intergovernmental agreement, which makes the Health Department exist, needed to be updated. So we did an amendment to our IGA, and that took a while. It took a few months for us to get each county on board and in agreement with that. And so we got that done, and then we applied for CDS funding this year, and we actually did make it to the draft bill for Senate appropriations. And of course, you know, we're not sure what the budget's going to do at the federal level, so your guess is as good as mine, but we're hopeful. The amount that we asked for from the CDS funding is about $3 million. That still leaves about $3.4 million that we'll need to continue to look for funding for. However, we have some potential options with USDA, and now that we have our IGA amended, we qualify for some of those programs. And then also, one thing that I didn't realize until we got into this process is that most funders that you approach want you to have some sort of base funding to start with. They don't want to be the first one to put money in. So with the CDS funding, that would give us a really good, I guess, match, for lack of a better term, for those other funders that we're pursuing. So we are certainly hopeful that the federal budget will continue to progress, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to secure the rest of the funding. But by having the extension to our development agreement, it gives us a little more time to get that together. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Trish? All right, I guess we're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so with nothing else, motion or...
Resolution.
Just a direction? Or me?
No, adopt the resolution that's in your packet, so.
Okay. That didn't say on this part.
No, sorry.
Okay, and here it said yays and nays, so that's why I was wondering about something. All right, in that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to offer a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Fort Morgan and the Northeast Colorado Health Department.
Second. All right, so I have a resolution by James Parks, a second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
All righty, good. All right, next on the agenda, presentation of possible action on a resolution supporting a DOLA grant application for the regional housing needs assessment. Again, Mr. Nation.
Okay, thank you. We do these on occasion when we want to seek out some grant money from the state. This resolution in particular will allow us to reach out to DOLA and get money that they have available for their regional housing assessments. When they started doing Proposition 1, 2, 3, and looking more at the state level of what the housing situations were, they started to make some of these grant monies available. But then they've also put requirements on us that we have to do housing need assessments in our region, or at least in our community. This time around, we're looking at doing a regional effort when we go for this grant. The City of Fort Morgan would be the fiscal agent on this, and we're going to try to partner with Brush and Wiggins on this regional effort, and Log Lane is going to be part of this. But they need us to be able to go to DOLA and say that we're willing to do it as a community. So the resolution tonight is the council saying that we're good with going after the DOLA money, and then it allows the mayor to sign all the paperwork that we'll have with this one. So happy to answer any questions.
All right, anybody have any questions? Any further discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution supporting the DOLA grant application for regional housing needs assessment and authorizing the mayor to sign any paperwork.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Lauren Boyette, a second by Jim Parks, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, moving on to presentation of possible action on a resolution authorizing the sale of certain vacant real estate property in Nelson subdivision that is an abandoned well site. Mr. Linton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is actually a revised resolution. I had this before you. People that are watching. Anyway, this is a revised resolution. I had brought this earlier and after some surveying and some legal work and some cleanup of what's going on over there. I'm bringing it back to you with the same buyer. Elric, Ryan and Anna Elric decided to purchase the property, so I just need you to okay this revised resolution.
All righty, any questions or further discussion?
After the work, we discovered that the parcel that we were trying to have them buy was actually smaller than what we had in the original paperwork, so this is a smaller parcel. And then we identified another person that is associated with it, which is the next agenda item, so.
It all needed cleaned up, so we cleaned it up. So the next resolution is the rest of that, it's 160 feet by eight-foot piece that was mixed into this.
Let them go on.
Oh, sorry. I guess I'm going to agree to that.
All right, so I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing the sale of certain vacant real property that is an abandoned well site.
Second.
Okay, so you had a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, now tell us about the second piece.
This is the second piece. This is the remaining 160 feet by eight feet that Jose Luna agreed to purchase, so I'm asking for a resolution to sell that little piece of abandoned well property.
All right, any questions or discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing the sale of vacant property that is abandoned well site to Mr. Luna.
Second.
So again, a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Next is on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance number 1321, an ordinance annexing Enclave A properties. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comment to the issue before City Council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens in which event time -- in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on October 8th.
All right, next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the second of three enclave annexations that the city is undergoing this year. This is Enclave A, number one, number two, and number three. A little background on enclave annexations. If a city has surrounded an area in unincorporated county for over three years, the city can, if they've determined it's in their best interest, they can annex that enclave. And the state statute outlines some of the steps that we need to take, which most importantly is providing the public notice and having the public hearing. We've sent letters out to the residents and the businesses in this enclave back in July, July 18th. We also sent out a notice about the public hearing after we had the Planning Commission meeting on September 22nd. Planning Commission did recommend that we move this forward to City Council, and this is a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance. Enclave A, number one, and number two, and number three is about 23 acres. It's got 41 properties, and currently it's a mix of zoning between residential, some businesses, and a church. We have heard from a few residents in the area. One of the -- some of the comments have been, of course, I don't want to annex, but a lot of questions about will the streets be paved, will there be curb and gutter? We've answered that with that is up to the council and our budgeting process. Some people have asked about their water wells and if they have to come on city services. We've left that at their discretion, and if they have a well, as long as it's operating, they can continue to use that well. We did have one gentleman that came in at the first reading that had some concerns. We've worked with him and worked out those concerns to his satisfaction. One had to do with a permit for a carport that he was going to apply for. We've worked that out, and we're continuing to work on some drainage issues that he has identified. With a lot of all the letter we sent out and the addresses of the enclave were in your packet, and with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Tom? All right, next we'll hear public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, if there's not anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this issue, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
Yes, Your Honor, there was one comment received stating they were opposed to being annexed into the city, and they would like to stay in the county.
Okay. We'll now proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any discussion of the council?
I guess I'm surprised. Sorry. I guess I'm surprised, Your Honor. We've got a large crowd here, and many of the property owners are here, and they didn't want to voice their concerns to let us know how they feel, or I don't understand that. I'm surprised, I guess. Okay, I know there's a couple other ones that are in a... Okay, guess we proceed?
That's what I was planning. All right. Okay, if there's no further discussion by the council, I'll entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close. Second.
So I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right, fine. Next is council action. Ms. Romberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Having heard the duly noticed public hearing, the council now has the option to make a resolution to approve ordinance number 1321, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fort Morgan, annexing to the City of Fort Morgan multiple tracts of land in unincorporated Morgan County known as Enclave A, number one, number two, and number three annexation, to not approve the resolution or to continue the resolution.
All right, so I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution, accepting the ordinance 1321 annexing the City of Fort Morgan, a certain tract of land in unincorporated Morgan County known as Enclave A, annexation and authorized to publish by title only. Second.
So have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty. So next is the second reading, public hearing on ordinance number 1322, an ordinance zoning Enclave A properties. Again, this is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issue before City Council. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. All the other qualifications still apply. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on October 8th.
All righty, next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker. Tom?
Again, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Following annexation, the city is required to zone the properties. And what we did is took a look at the surrounding properties, as you can see on the map that's on the screen, and we identified what we thought would be the best zoning given the areas. For annexation area A, number one, we've determined R2 annexation -- R2 zoning would be the best zoning for that set of properties, as it is just adjacent to a property that's already zoned R2. Below that and above or north of Arapahoe, we have decided that zoning, that transitional zoning, would be the best. There's a mix of businesses and residential in that area, and that zoning allows both of those type of activities to be present. And then south of Arapahoe Avenue, we've determined that R2 zoning would be best suited for that area, as it is primarily surrounded by residential zoning R2, which is also to the west of that. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, next we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, if there's not anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
There were none.
We'll now proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any discussion by the council? There's no further discussion by the council, I entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
Motion to close. Second.
So I have a motion to close the hearing by Jim Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right. Finally is council action. Ms. Romberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, having heard the duly noticed public hearing, at this time, the appropriate action for council is to make a resolution to either approve or disapprove of ordinance number 1322, an ordinance of the City of Fort Morgan, Colorado, zoning certain real properties known as the Enclave A, number one, number two, and number three annexation as medium-density residential R2 and traditional T-zone districts.
All righty, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution approving ordinance 1322 zoning the City of Fort Morgan, certain action -- let me go back up here -- on certain tract of land in unincorporated Morgan County known as Enclave A property annexation and authorized to publish by title only.
Did you say that, John? Okay, so I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by John Caper, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty, and continuing the fun. Next on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance number 1323, an ordinance annexing Enclave B properties. Again, this is a public hearing. Keep public comment to issues before the City Council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. The other limitations, as before, are still enforced. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on October 8th.
Next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker. Tom?
Again, Mayor and City Council, this is an enclave annexation. It's Enclave B and number two -- B number one and B number two. Again, this area has been surrounded by the city for an excess of three years, which state statute allows the city to annex that property as an enclave. It's -- has been found in the best interest of the city to annex this property. And what we've looked at is it's approximately 14 acres. It's got about 18 different properties. It's got a wide mix of uses currently. Again, we sent the letter out announcing our intent to enclave annexation and zone this property in July. We had a public meeting in September, and we've had the first reading in October, and this is now the second reading and public hearing. We had two or three calls from that area from our initial letter. Code enforcement has been out to visit folks. I had a couple of calls after we sent out the public hearing notice as well. Some of the questions... Some of the questions I've had is some of the roads are considered private roads even though they're not vacated or mapped like that in the county. And what we discussed with that individual is that the city at this point has no intent to turn those into roads as there is adequate circulation in that area. However, since the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad owns Burlington Road, if that should ever go away, we might have to look at alternatives. Again, we had the curb and gutter questions, paving the street questions, and also questions about services and water wells. And each of those questions were answered and the information provided to the individuals. And with that I can answer any questions.
All right, next we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, come up, sign in, please.
Hello, I'm Joe Schrum and I live on South Ensign. And I was just trying to figure out what the big push on this is because I have no water services up and down my street, so they'd have to run water and sewer down it on South Ensign and on Brush Avenue, because I got properties on both. And are they going to give us big, big discount if we do get annexed in to get hooked up or is it free or how's that going to work out? And we have no drainage there, so, and how quick are they going to solve all them problems? Because the way I'm looking at it, it's going to cost the city a lot of money and they're not going to get a return on it to fix everything right in that area. So that's one of my concerns. And if nothing's broke there, don't try to fix it. So that's about all I got.
Okay, well, thank you.
My name's Tyler Hall. I'm actually Joe's son-in-law and I don't live in that area. I live over on Grant Street by the hospital, but just coming in as a concerned citizen today. Most of my concerns are financial and fiscal responsibility of this. Tom said that the statute is if the city finds it in its best interest, then you can add the enclave. I'm wondering what that interest is to the city and what the city itself is going to benefit from this. My way of thinking is after the zoning and the surveying, potential curb and gutter work, potential drainage issues, if you do have to do anything with Burlington Northern, I've dealt with a lot of that with my job, that's not fun. That gets tied up very quickly and can take years. I just don't know if the financial return to the city on doing this annexation is going to make it worth it, so I would just urge you all to maybe postpone or do some more research into this before you make a resolution. Thank you.
I live at the 115 South Ensign. I don't have a whole lot to add, but I know at our house specifically, I've tested the water with like at-home kits and I know our well water's very high in nitrates. And so I was thinking like if you guys are going to annex us in, that should kind of give us a right to better water in the area. And I'm sure it's for, for more people than just at our house, you know? I'm sure it's the groundwater that's contaminated, so I haven't done any tests with the health department, but I can do that if you need us to or however it needs to move forward, so that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, here we come.
I have property over at 202 South Duel and 310 Brush Avenue. So that is in the Brush subdivision, which is south of that 60-foot easement, what we call Brush Avenue. I have properties 1 and 2 and 15 and 16. I guess my main concern is, you know, I get a letter from the city police department stating that, this was on August the 12th of 2025, basically it's stating, and I believe you all have this letter, stating that your property is currently conditioned that does not comply with the city ordinance. So my thoughts are, well, one, did they do a survey? I mean, did they go out and actually the city councilman go out in that jurisdiction and then each individual lot or residency over there, did they do an evaluation or was this just the letter that lets you slap together in five minutes and send out to everybody? But it says like my, you know, I take pride in my property over there. I know Brush Avenue is not incorporated in my property, but in 2014 I purchased that property from the Urises and they had greyhounds racing back there and it was just trashed and I cleaned that property up. I have a building that I'm future, going to probably put a business in there, but and I have a residency that's at 202 South Duel that we keep up. And to get this letter in the mail, it just kind of hit me kind of hard. It's like, well, you know, if you're not going to take the time, you know, and evaluate each individual property and state that, you know, you know, animal waste, you know, inoperable vehicles, structures of buildings, weeds, I have no weeds on my property. You all can go buy it and look at it. My main concern is, you know, if we're not going to do anything now and enforce the, like the curb and gutters, I mean, is there a timeframe on this? Because I'm just curious, like, well, we're not going to do anything with Brush Avenue is my main concern, because Brush Avenue does go from Main Street and it kind of dead, dead ends there by Schrum's property and then pretty much the weeds and stuff of those properties have taken over for years. I've cleaned up that hole and I've taken care of Brush Avenue and that's a 60-foot easement. So is the city going to come in there and take care of that, you know, once it is incorporated? So that's one of my main concerns. Are they going to come in like Quality Water did after, you know, I tried to get permits to build for four years and the county wouldn't issue a building permit? I talked to the city, the city wanted nothing to do with me. They said, you know, that's not my problem. This was back in 2014 to 16. So finally, you know, I got hold of the county, they issued me a permit to build. I've been maintaining that forever. Quality Water comes in, because it's a right-of-way, and they just come in and plow right through that property and take basically from Burlington, they went south there on, I think that's Ensign, and then they cut it across under Brush Avenue and tore all that ground up to feed the two properties that are just to the west of South Duel. So now that, I think they were on well and then they converted them over to Quality Water. I mean, those are my concerns is that, you know, we're taking, there's a lot of people over there that take a lot of pride in our properties and then, you know, if we're not going, the drainage over there is horrible. It floods my property all the time. So that would be my main concern if the city's going to take it over with curb and gutter. So, yeah, you want to annex us in, but my big question is why? I mean, who's going to maintain it? And do you have the budget for it? Those are my main concerns. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, if there's no one else in the public who wishes to speak on this, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
There were none.
Okay, now we'll proceed to council discussion. I guess the first thing I'd say is, Brent, can you answer some of their questions, please?
Yeah, there's several of those things I'd like to answer. You know, John brings up a lot of good points with the situation that he went through is that you've got a piece of ground that has been interlocked with the city for multiple years, with us having no jurisdiction over what goes on over there. And so when somebody would have come and asked for water service with it being in Quality Water service, we have a governmental agreement with Quality Water that we will not provide in their service area because it's not in our jurisdiction, because it's not annexed in. And so his situation, I won't speak to the, the weed side of it and that, but when you're trying to have conversations about who has jurisdiction and, and where you get your building permits and all that stuff, when you have these little pieces of ground that are not under our control but right up against our boundaries or in the middle of all of our boundaries, that's where we have confusion. And taking these properties into the city allows us to then just go ahead and have the jurisdiction so we can talk to them about their permitting, we can work with them about where their water service is going to come from and everything like that. The point that Tom was trying to make when we've talked to the other residents about this is that, yes, we understand that there are drainage issues and things like that over there. And since these already exist, we will then try to work those into our capital plans to solve them as the city has money to do this. We're not bringing all of these in so we can come in and put in curb gutter and sidewalk everywhere and pave the streets all next year just because that's what we want to do. The first step is to bring them into our jurisdiction so we just have the say in what needs to be done moving forward. And it's not a fault of the county, but the way that the county looks at compliance is different than how we look at compliance. The county has different standards that they use for compliance and how they do things and how they enforce, you know, blight-type situations and things like that. We have very specific ordinances on that. And so when it's up against our boundaries and we want to have some of that say over it, this type of process is what takes place. And then we, as the conveying jurisdiction, then has the say over those type of compliance issues, those type of permitting issues, how to start looking at solving drainage issues and things like that. But until it's in our jurisdiction, we don't have the ability to step in and say anything about that. The issue with Quality Water choosing to go down an existing right-of-way that was recognized by the county was within probably Quality Water's right to do that, but it was a county issue, it wasn't a city issue. And, but with us bringing that into our jurisdiction, if Quality Water would decide to serve somebody else over there, it would then be our right-of-way to be able to say, okay, no or yes, that we can make this work and happen and everything. So these are the things that we try to do to clean up these situations and make them smoother going forward. We're not here to say that we're going to solve everybody's problem and you're going to have all of your drainage concerns taken care of. And we're not also going to be going into negotiations with the railroad on the right-of-way and everything. We're very well aware that that is a issue over there, but the railroad allows that use of that 60-foot-ish area for, you know, conveyance and everything. And so, but we will tackle some of these problems into the future and decide if we have these people that have now been newly annexed in, you know, in Enclave A, if we get requests for water service, we can now actually go out and talk to them about providing them water service without having a violation with our agreement with Quality Water. And so it's those type of things that we need to, as planners, be able to have and be able to comply with. And when you get these zones that are completely surrounded for a long period of time, it just makes it easier for us to be the jurisdiction that steps in and, and has control over them, so.
All righty. And just so they would know, Chief, would you just explain how code enforcement works as far as?
Yeah, so to describe what happened there that John referred to also, as you know, we sent out letters to everybody, the city did, and then the police department went around, our code enforcement went to doors, knocking on doors, talked to probably most of the people here about the issues. If there was an issue, they were checking the box and letting them know what would not be in compliance if they were to be annexed into the city. In John's case, I might talk to John about it, he did get a letter without any explanation. When I went back and spoke to code enforcement, that person was not under the understanding they were going to contact them, that when they went there, there was nobody there, left that letter. I talked to John, there was no violation on John's property. They were trying to notify him of what could be a violation if they were part of the city. So we developed a, a blanket letter so that you could go and if there was animal waste on somebody's yard, you could say, if you were to be part of the city today, this is something you would need to correct. So that now, if we're having this and you guys choose to annex them, we're not trying to tell them now what the problems are in the future. We're trying to give them that education on the front side. What this would essentially mean is they would be required, every property owner would be required to, to follow all of our municipal code ordinances, which is what is on that letter that John refers to, that, that everybody had been given should they be annexed.
Okay, thanks. So I think that helps clear that up. Any other discussion by the council? Any questions or anything?
I have one. How are we going to deal with people who have livestock? Are they going to be grandfathered in?
Yeah, the, the direction and the conversation we've had about livestock is that the livestock that they have will be grandfathered in. And so if the livestock passes away and it, they look at our code and their replacement isn't compliant with our code, we would tell them that they couldn't, you know, come back with something that isn't allowed underneath our municipal code, so, okay.
And the questions I've had with that, they've understood that and been understanding.
Okay. Okay, anything else from council?
I have one for you. Too sharp, I would like to hear you probably describe, travel is already up here, know the problem of county, city, and emergency services. And I think that having that resolved without having pie-shaped parts out would improve our response and go ahead.
Yeah, the way it's cut out now, you can see with, with the map, there's several areas that are part of the city, yet some residences that are what would look like within city limits are not part of the city limits. So anytime you get an emergency call, the police are not responding, it's the sheriff's office responding from another, another location. So, for example, with Mr. Schrum's property, if there's an incident there happening at his property, the county has to respond to that. So this would make that all uniform, give quicker response, typically quicker because we are here, county's not always in, in the city. So that would make it simpler for us and I think quicker response.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So, oh, go ahead. I was going to go back to the, to the livestock question, I guess, after Doug mentioned it. And this may kind of fall into the last part of it, but if there's, if the livestock's a nuisance, what's the, what's the procedure on reporting something like that and how to contain them and?
I mean, I think we would have the Animal at Large Ordinance, so anything that's not contained would, would apply. The one thing I brought up to Brent, that would be my biggest concern as far as being grandfathered in would be roosters. I don't know if we have roosters in that group, but those would be a violation.
My, I would just sum up and say that the goats would be on my mind. They're not pinned in or anything like that.
So I would think that would be an animal at large if they're outside, outside the fenced area.
And we've spoken to those individuals and said they'd have to start pinning them.
Okay.
Add on here. First, I just want to thank the folks that came out, because that's always part of the process. And if you don't come, largely we're not aware of your individual concerns, so showing up is important whether you think you're being heard or not. Certainly I'm listening because I don't live in that ward, but I drive by and through. My thoughts are several, but most pertinent would be acknowledging that you moved to a county for a certain reason and what happens is these city boundaries grow up around you. And at a certain point, for growth management, our planning commission looks at a larger picture many years out, so you might have been there for quite some time and noticing that the city is encroaching and pushing in on you, well, at some point, it just makes more sense that you- more sense that you become absorbed into the city. And it does, it does involve a lot of cost on the city's end, but this is not an overnight process. I believe that you won't be asked to do, with the exception of possibly code violations in weeds and things like that, you're not going to see immediate changes to your current situation, your water situation and things like that. But your voice, once you're in the city, will certainly have to be taken into consideration on all your concerns for those things, for your drainage, for your water, for your animals, all of the things that you currently have. It's just kind of, I've been through this process personally before. It's not pleasant, but I think sometimes, like when the planning commission met, I hope that some of you were there in June, they did make that recommendation after that meeting to us, that they felt that it was time to look at, you know, annexing the properties. So I just want to make sure that you know that you are being heard and that we do take into consideration your comments. You'll have to come up to the microphone.
My concern is, I'm Jim Korf, 100 South Dual. My concern is utilities, what they're going to do with our utilities, since we're on quality water, you know, if we have our own trash, if we're residential, if we have shops that are commercial, what can we do about it? That's something, can you guys briefly tell us what we can do or what can happen?
Yeah, the way this is, yeah, the way this is structured is that we're not anticipating doing anything that'll make any major changes. We adopted changes to the water code a couple of years ago to allow for people that reside in the city limits to have a different water purveyor, that used to not be the case. And so people can stay on quality water or they can stay on their well. It's, those things aren't changing. So you'll be able to stay with the utility services that you have. There are a handful of people that are already on our sanitary sewer service and they're paying a double charge for being outside the city limits. They'll actually have that double charge removed. They will go to be in a residential customer and their sewer bills will go back to be just like everybody else's. And so there's actually benefits on the utility side for being in the city limits, so.
So is there going to be a fee to hook up to the sewer if we ever decide to hook up?
Yeah, it's no different than if you were outside the city limits. There are tap fees that have to be paid in order to hook up the city services, whether you're in the city limits or out of the city limits. And those fees do not change, they're not impacted by this process whatsoever.
So if you're unseptic, you can keep that?
Yes.
There's no, there's no, what do you call it, obligation to switch?
Correct. Yep.
And what about the business side, if like, commercial side, is there any, is this?
Yeah.
Is this going to be?
The zoning side of it will be in the next discussion, but you'll find that we try to use a generic zone in that area that would encompass all the current uses that are over there. And then you'll, if you would change anything or do anything different, you would have to come in and meet with Tom and planning and zoning, and make sure that your use is compliant with the code that we have for that zone.
Okay. I was just curious about the businesses compared to the houses.
Yep. No, we're using a zone that both can be allowed in that area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? In that case, I entertain a motion to either close or continue the public hearing.
Motion to close. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jeff Morford, second by Bill Garcia. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, next is council action. Ms. Roemberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Having heard the duly noticed public hearing, at this time, the appropriate action for council is to make a resolution to either approve or disapprove of ordinance number 1324, an ordinance of the city council for the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, annexing to the city of Fort Morgan certain tracts of land in unincorporated Morgan County known as Enclave B, number one and number two annexation.
Okay, I entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I make a resolution to approve ordinance 1323, annexing the city of Fort Morgan, tract of land incorporated Morgan County known as Enclave B annexation, and authorized by title only.
Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by John Caper, second by Jeff Morford. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Now, lastly is, next on the agenda is a public hearing number 1324, and ordinance zoning Enclave B properties. Again, this is a public hearing, please keep public comment to the issues before city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens. Other qualifications still apply as before. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on October 8th.
Next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker. Tom?
Good evening, once again. As in enclave annexation A, we took a look at the zoning around the properties, as zoning is the next step after you annex an area into town. In looking at enclave B1 and B2, to the north was B2 zoning, to the east is B2 zoning, it's transitional to the west, and it's residential to the south. We looked at the area, what it's being currently used for, it's a great mix of businesses and residents. And we have proposed, we're proposing B2 zoning in this area to allow for both of those activities to continue in this area.
All right. Next, we'll hear public comments. Anyone who wishes to speak on this issue. If there's not anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, there were none.
We'll now proceed to council discussion. Any questions from council or any discussion by council?
I think that would answer Jim Korf's question about being able to keep current businesses or current uses in place at B2.
Correct. Okay, so if there's no further discussion by council, I'd entertain a motion to either close or continue the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
So, having a motion by Bill Garcia, second by Doug Sashow. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, council action. Ms. Roemberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, having heard the duly noticed public hearing on this, at this time, the appropriate action is for council to make a resolution to approve or disapprove of ordinance number 1324, zoning the property as B2.
All right, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, Councilman Caper, just enclave C annexation, shouldn't that be B?
On our outline, it's got Charlie, it's got a Bravo. Just making sure we're on Bravo.
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess I'll offer a resolution. Approving 1324, annexing the city of Fort Morgan certain tract of land in unincorporated Morgan County known as Enclave B annexation and authorized by published by title only.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, and second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to say no more public
Thank you, Tom.
hearings tonight. Okay, next is presentation on a humane society architectural assessment and cost analysis. Mr. Underwood.
We'll just wait for the PowerPoint here. Well, Brent helps out with that. So this is really the byproduct of, in mid to late 2024, there was an organizational assessment done of our humane society. What came out of this assessment, and it was an independent assessment, was really, depends who read it, you know, if I'm being honest. We really looked at it and it was tough to really gauge for growth, development, and everything, just maybe what we needed out of that facility, what we wanted out of that facility. So in June of this year, we went out for proposals from various architects who were, who specialized in this field, essentially to give us an existing facility report and a needs assessment, taking into account a variety of factors from the data, historically, currently, all that stuff, as well as staff needs, PD thoughts, and overall, just to kind of guide us in general of a future direction. And so with that being said, I want to introduce Jamie of GH2 Architects. They're a firm very familiar with this kind of work that we brought on and have been working with each other for four or five months now.
Hi, y'all. Thank you for having us here. So my name is Jamie Preashaw. I'm a senior architect and associate principal with GH2 Architects, based out of Tulsa, but we have offices here in Denver, which is where I'm located. A little bit about GH2 first and why it is that we're standing here. So GH2 is a nationwide firm, and I personally lead our animal group. So any buildings that have animals within them fall into my group's, you know, realm. And we have done animal shelters, veterinary hospitals, horse show facilities, I mean, any creature that you can imagine, even Okapis, they're cool, they don't want to cuddle, but they're cool, you know, around the world. So we are well-versed in this animal realm, and certainly feel like we have the credibility to stand here and talk about, and also to assess your guys' existing facility. Also, please, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. So a little overview of our process. So we were hired to do a facility report and a needs assessment. Part of that is looking at the existing building. What is it that you guys have? What is the structure that is standing here today? What are the bones? Is it functioning? Is it in disrepair? Is it beautiful? All of those things. Also, then, looking at the data. So how many animals are you taking in a year? How many animals are going to new homes? How many animals are being taken to other shelters and then adopted out? Overall, what are the overall outcomes? And then, most importantly, how long are those animals staying? We will talk about that here a little bit more in a minute. So the existing facility was built in 2002. Since then, there's been renovations that have happened within the facility and also outside of the facility. We did notice that there are some things that can be improved within this facility. Some of those things are, the lobby is way too small. There's not enough room in there for somebody to get in and even, you know, move their elbows around. There also is not currently any facility or any rooms within the facility for things like get to know. So let's say I come to the shelter and I want to hang out with a dog that I potentially want to take home. There's not really a space within there right now to allow that to happen. That is currently happening in their lobby, which is already too small, and therefore not really getting, you know, the best outcome that you possibly could be. You don't really get a chance to get to know a dog when they're in the middle of a lobby and you're trying to keep them from getting to the dog trees. Some of the other things that we noticed was storage. There's a lot of stuff in this facility right now. You'll see the second photo from the left is one of the outbuildings that has dog food in it. We know that there needs to be dog food, there needs to be tons and tons of dog food, because frankly, buying in bulk is the most efficient way to go about this. It needs to be stored better. Right now, that is out there just for rodents to get to. Also, it's in a little bit of a disarray. This could absolutely be done a little bit better than it's being done. Not to say that there's not wonderful things happening in here, but we could probably clean some of this up. You'll notice one of the photos has a whole bunch of kennels that are currently located in one of the runs. That is supposed to be a dog run, that's not supposed to be storage for a kennel. That kennel could be used for animals rather than just for storage, that storage could go elsewhere. You'll also note that one of the panels is kind of coming off away from, that's one of the gates coming away from the rest of the framing, that really needs to be fixed. There's better things that we can do than that nowadays. This was, in 2002, this was built as a pound. The world for animal shelters has changed. We're no longer pounds, we are shelters, and the thoughts on animals has changed as well. One of the things that's changed in this world is called the five freedoms. So the five freedoms is really looking at what is it the animals need to survive and then also to thrive. So the ability to express their normal behaviors, let a dog be a dog, the ability for animals to have food and water, kind of a basic thing. Freedom from fear and distress, that's a big one, I'm going to hit on that again here in a second. And then freedom from pain, injury, and disease. That one gets a little tricky. For us to be able to say, hey, this animal is in a lot of pain, sometimes we have to make the call that it's the most humane thing to do to euthanize. And sometimes that's a really hard call to make, but we need to be able to make those calls, we need to have the right space to do that respectfully. Also then, the freedom from discomfort due to environment. So it kind of gets hot, it kind of gets cold here. We need to be able to keep these animals in an environment that they're comfortable in and not overly hot or overly cold. I mentioned that we would talk a little bit about freedom from fear. So there is a large movement within the animal world called Fear Free. I'm actually a Fear Free certified professional. I find this very interesting because it's all factual-based, it's all evidence-based. It goes down to creating an environment that animals don't have fear in, they have better outcomes, they are healthier, they have less stay, they're more adoptable, they're not as likely to get in fights with their neighbor, they're not as likely to contract whatever disease happening in the shelter. And there's very basic things that we can do from a design standpoint, and also from a standpoint of how the shelter functions, to help promote Fear Free. I mentioned we also took a look at the data. So nationally, the country was heading towards about a 5% increase every year up until COVID. One of the wonderful things that happened from COVID, everybody stayed home, and everybody wanted a dog or a cat. So the numbers nationally plummeted. Thankfully, we have not yet gotten back up to where those numbers were prior to COVID. Since COVID, we have noticed about a 1% increase nationally, rather than a 5. That's wonderful, that's wonderful animals. However, our shelters are still full again. One of the things that we have to consider when our shelters become full is the length of stay. So that is, how long is that animal in that shelter, from the day that they are taken in to the day that they are adopted out, or should their outcome not be as pleasant, whatever that day ends up being, that is their total length of stay. Nationally, the length of stay is about 14 days for both cats and dogs. The shelter here has a significantly larger length of stay than that. We're currently around 30 to 40 days. Part of why the shelter today is overcrowded is because we're holding on to creatures longer than national trends suggest we should be doing. Now, I understand that Fort Morgan is a unique location, we are rural, there's a lot of animals that come in, there's not a huge population to be adopting these animals out. In those situations, we would suggest that we create teaming partners with larger shelters in other metropolitan districts that can then help us. You know, they can take some of our animals away and adopt them out into environments where there are more people that want to be adopting them. Denver Dumb Friends League has a huge program for in-taking animals from smaller shelters. Going to, oh, one of the other things that we can do, and I know this is a hot button, so my apologies, another thing that we can do to be reducing the length of stay, especially for cats, is a TNR program. TNR programs have been successfully adopted across the nation and have successfully reduced populations in shelters. I have a ton of data that we can talk about as to why TNR programs are good things to do, we can talk about those later if you'd like. But that absolutely helps bring down our number of cats that are in the shelter. And frankly, I don't think it's humane to keep a cat in a shelter for two years. That's not fair. Why is it that length of stay is important beyond just the animal care? There are requirements in the state of Colorado that say if an animal is here for so many days, it has to have so much space. So what you're seeing here is just a quick diagram. That equation, there's a big old equation, is based on how large the animal is. It's measured from the length, the tip of their nose, to the base of their tail. It's measured from the length, the tip of their nose, to the base of their tail. So, we did a very rough calculation for a golden retriever, standard golden retriever. I went and measured my mom's dog and said, how long is your back? And then, what does that equation mean that you need from a space standpoint in order to meet these requirements? So, up to five days, his name is Bailey. Bailey would need 16 square feet. Five days to 30 days, Bailey needs 24 square feet. 30 days to six months, Bailey needs 32 square feet. And over six months, Bailey needs 48 square feet. That is a whole lot of space for an animal that probably doesn't want to be sitting there for six months in a cage. Cats have similar requirements, they're just smaller. So, taking all that information, right, understanding in five years, what is our anticipated population? Also, understanding if we don't do anything about these length of stay numbers, what happens? Also, understanding that although this building has wonderful bones, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. The HVAC, for instance, really could use some help. The plumbing is wonderful, we need more drains. The ceiling tiles, if I go back to one of those original photos, you'll see that on like the very left photo and then the second from the left, those ceiling tiles are missing. The reason those ceiling tiles are missing is because one of those darn cats got out and got stuck in the ceiling. Had a very nice adventure. We would not suggest ceiling tiles in those spaces for that very reason, that is not that uncommon of a problem to have in shelters. So, what is it that we suggest? I have in front of you three different options. Option one is roughly a 500 square foot addition. Option two is roughly 1,000 square feet. And option three is roughly 1,500 square feet. These, of course, all have different price points that go along with them. Option one really takes the basics of the building today, provides an adequate intake room. One of the things that the current facility does not have is when animals are brought by the animal control officers or the police officers in this case, there's not really a dedicated space for those animals to come in and get evaluated, get vaccinated, get, you know, do you have a chip? Get all of those basic things done. One of the big things that we see in animal shelters is vaccinations the minute they walk in that door. Studies show that vaccinations can work as fast as 15 minutes. And should that dog come in and have something that is, you know, potentially contagious to other animals, or not have something that's already in the shelter, after 15 minutes, we're already starting to protect each other. So, an intake room is incredibly important. You'll also note that those have, all three of these options have different isolation wards. We have isolation wards for cats, we have isolation wards for dogs. Going back to that Fear Free, cats are terrified of dogs, that should not be a surprise to anybody. So, we try to make sure that they're not either seeing, hearing, or smelling any of the dogs. Isolation rooms help us make sure that any animal is not sick before we let them out into the general population, again, making sure that we're not exposing everybody. You'll note on here that all of the kennels are suggested to be replaced. The kennels and the runs that are in there right now are not efficient, they are hard to clean, which again, makes pathogens that are being passed from animal to animal. They are small, so this would make them slightly larger, and this would make them safer. We noticed that there was a giant hole in that one kennel. This would alleviate those kinds of concerns. These also, all three options would have different, you know, answers to mechanical problems, making sure that air is isolated the right way, so that again, we're not passing on pathogens from animal to animal, or passing on scents from dogs to cats. What else? They all expand the lobby. Each one of these options gives an opportunity for a get to know room, if not two, I think there's two in each one. Again, making sure that we have that ability to be adopting these animals out in a safe manner, having them the ability for people to get to know them before they take them home. One of our colleagues, actually, when we were here touring this facility, there was a dog that looked an awful lot like her dog, and that dog came home with us. Now, we sat in this kennel, and this poor dog was terrified of all of us. And of course, they're all women like me, and we can be a little overbearing of cuddle with me, darn it. So, that poor dog cuddled with us and he ended up coming home with us. But it would have been great if we could have taken him into a get to know room instead, where he might not have been as terrified. I think that sort of wraps up these options, if there's any questions about them, I'm happy to answer. But with that, I thank you guys for your time. This has been a pleasure to work on, and I hope that we can help improve some of these conditions for the creatures and also the staff that work in them.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Nation.
Yeah, I was just, I just want to chime in, I wanted to thank Matt and GH2 for all the work they did on this. We've been having discussions about that facility down there with the operators of the facility, and they've looked at different grants and different things like that, and we were, we kept running into a stumbling block of, well, we don't know what you need, and so it's hard to go in and ask for a grant when you don't know what you're asking for. And so, when we sat down and talked to them, one of the things I suggested, and that's why we put this into this capital budget, was let's just go ahead and do this type of assessment of the facility and get a general idea of what, you know, an expansion may look like and everything. And so, this is just the first, you know, piece of work that we would do. This is kind of equivalent to what we did with the aquatics facility, you know, three or four years ago, when we just had a conceptual plan done with, you know, construction numbers attached to it. These are not construction plans by any means, but this at least gives us a planning tool and then more information about how the facility is currently being run and what things may look like in the future. And so, this was just a little piece of assistance. I think it's good for both myself and Lauren to have something like this that we can look at, because we both, you know, this facility kind of falls on both of our plates, and so we appreciate the work that was done, and there's a lot of good information in this report, so.
All right, well, I agree about good information, so I think it's very thorough, so I'm impressed. Any other comments from council? All right, well, thank you again. All right, next is consent agenda. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor. All matters listed under item 13 consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
All righty, is there any comment as far as corrections, additions, the minutes or anything? All right, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I make a resolution to accept the consent agenda for the October payroll and the November fourth, 2025 council regular meeting.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Jim Parks, second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, next is reports by officials and staff. Mr. Nation.
Okay, a couple of things for you tonight. Just wanted to point out, we've started hanging Christmas decorations, if you haven't noticed. We've added different ones to the upper end of Main Street here and everything, so if you look out the window, you can actually see some of them right there. So, just the staff, they put in a lot of hard work, it's a lot of coordination between multiple departments to get that done, and it's, it's just that time of the year. We've also started playing Christmas music on Main Street. That was a request from the downtown business group that we start doing that, so when you're walking up and down Main Street, you'll hear Christmas music now. Also wanted to point out that the sales tax report has been included in your report packet once again. We're still down a little bit from last year, but we've kind of closed that gap a little bit from where we were, so earlier in the year. So, just making you aware of that. And then, the one other thing I was going to point out, haven't had a chance to put it in any of my normal reports, we're having some work done to the dinky down in front of the Parks Building. So, if you drive by after this weekend, you'll see that it's receiving a fresh coat of paint. We had a nonprofit group reach out to us that goes around the state and helps provide services to people that have train-related facilities, trains themselves, and they reached out to us and wanted to help us with that. So, this group of, I think they're mostly retirees, are coming out on the weekends, and they're providing painting services and that, and replacing some of the broken lights. They are asking us to do some of the structural work, we're going to work with some of our welders to see if we can repair some of the steel that's in bad shape, but overall, they're providing all the materials and everything, and so it's no cost to us, but when it's all said and done, we'll have a dinky train that'll have a fresh coat of paint here after the weekend. So, just wanted to make everybody aware of that going on, so that's all I got for you tonight.
All right, Chief Chef.
I just have a couple of things as well. This last weekend, we did our collections for Blue Santa, going on about 30 years now we've been collecting for Blue Santa, and we give to seniors that are less fortunate. We received quite a few donations this last weekend, however, we will still be collecting at the office through December fifth, so if anybody's willing to, we still collecting toiletries, non-perishable food items, or cash at the police department for seniors. Our beat meeting is next week, we will still be having it, even though it's Thanksgiving week, I will not be there, so you know, I'll be visiting my son and his family in Florida next week for Thanksgiving, but we will still be hosting the beat meeting, so it will still be, be going on. And then last, I just, I just want to put on your plate, get you to think about this a little bit. We've been making great strides when it comes to the homeless issues that we were here discussing probably about two years ago now. I think we've seen great progress overall. I think the Morgan County Housing Action Team and United Way really teamed up and done a really good job in that area. I will say that funding is set to run out around October, and through rising up and some of our other connections, we, we are seeing a, while there's been great success and a lot of great successful stories, there are people that are, that are going to fall through the cracks in all likelihood. And I just want you guys to start thinking about, should we not obtain more funding through the grant sources and some of those other things we have? In October of next year, that funding's going to run out, and we are going to have some more issues. So, I'd just like you to keep that on your radar a little bit, think about it on foresight so that we can move forward without going backwards first. That's all I have.
All right, anything from people in back? Mr. Underwood.
Just, just one quick comment. Just in that report, we have replaced all the gates and fixed all the deficiencies in the current system. One of the big pushes from Brent is even though we were doing this report, is he wanted to see us to immediately start putting in some effort to get some things repaired over at the facility. So, at the time of the report and the pictures, those gates were that way, but we are in much better shape already over there, and will continue to do so.
On that topic as well, they are required as part of the agreement to main, do those small maintenance items, up to, I believe, $500 or something like that they're required to be maintaining. They have fallen a few times, we've had to get them back up, but some of those maintenance things they should be doing as part of our agreement with the humane society.
All right, super. Anything else? All right, bids, meetings, and announcements.
Okay, there is five bids that are open. The Fort Morgan Municipal Airport apron expansion, expansion project is open and due November 25th at 3:00 PM. There is a sixty-six, 64 niche columbarium unit, that's open until December 5th at 2:45. Then, the street department has a single axle dump plow truck bid open until November 21st. And then, there are two compensation study and analysis bids, one for the city in general, and then one for the Fort Morgan Police Department, and they're both due November 28th at 5:00 PM.
All right.
I'm not done.
Oh, okay.
So, we are, the city offices, all city offices are closed on Thanksgiving, Thursday, Thanksgiving, and then the day after on the 28th, all day long. The next city council meeting is December 2nd, and there is an airport advisory board meeting on December 10th at 12:00 PM. Now, I'm done.
All right, seeing nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.